I would like all this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton, here. Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Kevin Dennis is absent. Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, for bills, we have five hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion carries. Remarks of visitors.
We have done, sir.
Bids.
We have done, sir.
We go right into ordinances. Tonight, we have Bill forty-eight seventeen on the agenda. Would the clerk please read this bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight seventeen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter four oh five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus, Missouri, to authorize veterinary clinics, veterinarians, or veterinary offices in the B-two Community Retail District and the B-three Downtown Business District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight seventeen is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As I spoke earlier, this is a ordinance change to allow veterinary clinics in the Downtown Business District as well as B-two, the Community Retail. Our current ordinance now doesn't specify between large animals, horses, camels and such, and then small animals, so we had to add the definition in for small animals. So this would only include, as we said, dogs and cats and small animals.
We've heard the staff report. Is there any questions or discussion? Is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight seventeen for the second time in title only? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight seventeen for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight seventeen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter four oh five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus, Missouri, to authorize veterinary clinics, veterinarians, or veterinary offices in the B-two Community Retail District and the B-three Downtown Business District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight seventeen has passed.
Thank you all.
We have Bill number forty-eight twenty on the agenda. Would the clerk please read this bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, establishing an all-way, four-way stop on South Mill Street at the intersection with Lee Avenue and Harrison Lane, and establishing an all-way, four-way stop on Central Avenue at the intersection with Huber Street, and establishing the placement of signs enforcing said stop signs and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight twenty is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please? I think we've went over parts of it.
Thank you, Mayor. The intersection of South Mill Street, Lee Avenue, South Adams Street, and Harrison Lane, and Central Avenue, Huber Street, were submitted to Intuition and Logic Engineering to determine whether the addition of a stop sign in all directions was needed based on current engineering standards. It was found that a stop sign is recommended for the intersections of South Mill Street and Lee Avenue, and Central Avenue and Huber Street due to the number of accidents, high traffic counts, and sight distance issues.
We've heard the staff report. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight twenty for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight twenty for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, establishing an all-way, four-way stop on South Mill Street at the intersection with Lee Avenue and Harrison Lane, and establishing an all-way, four-way stop on Central Avenue at the intersection with Huber Street, and establishing the placement of signs enforcing said stop signs and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
No.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
No.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight twenty has passed. We have Bill number forty-eight twenty-one on the agenda. Would the clerk please read this bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, establishing a no parking zone on the south side of the two-hundred block of Benton Drive, and establishing the placement of signs enforcing the no parking zone and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight twenty-one is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. Staff have received several complaints about parking on Benton Drive. After hearing points from both residents involved, we asked Intuition Logic to review the section of Benton Drive in question. Intuition and Logic provided a recommendation to make the south side of the street no parking due to the north side affording the greatest visibility. A few other smaller items were added into their report, however, such as no cul-de-sac. That's it.
Is there any questions or discussion?
Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, please. Didn't the neighbors kind of work it all out?
No.
No, I totally misread that.
No. No.
That sounded like a solid no. Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight twenty-one for the second time in title only?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight twenty-one for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, establishing a no parking zone on the south side of the two-hundred block of Benton Drive, and establishing the placement of signs enforcing the no parking zone and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Bill forty-eight twenty-one has passed. We have Bill forty-eight twenty-two on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section six oh five point one eight zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding business licenses and penalties and establishing an effective date.
Could I have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. One of the issues that we face is businesses getting either their initial business license or renewing their business license in a timely fashion. I know there have been certain businesses in the past that have come to you as far as enforcement. In discussions with other cities and with other clerks, and finally with a review by Brian and our legal staff, we felt that this may be a a helpful remedy to some of the lack of license or lack of renewals. Essentially, what it does is it places the same water notice and water disconnection as a tool to those who do not comply with our business license ordinances. So the penalty phase that is in our existing code under six oh five one eighty, this would add that with ten days' notice, just as we would do with a resident, they would receive advanced notice, but if they were not to come in and either get their original license or renew their existing license, but they were operating their business, we would be able to shut off their water. Then they would be subject to the standard reconnect fees, but they would also need to follow through with their business license as well. This is fairly common with communities across the Midwest, certainly here in Missouri, which is where the idea came from. And we feel that it will just give us another tool to assist the city clerk's office in making sure that businesses are compliant with this section of our code.
Bill forty-eight twenty-two is now. We've heard the staff report. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next session? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight twenty-two for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight twenty-two for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section six oh five one eight point one eight zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding business licenses and penalties and establishing an effective date. Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight twenty-two has passed. We have Bill forty-eight twenty-three on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section seven oh five point one two zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding water meter access and penalties and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight twenty-three is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. The City Water Department has been running into issues when checking meters, doing water shut-offs, and when doing water main work where they will not have access to a city water meter due to it being inside a building. Due to not having direct access to the meter, city workers are put in situations that they should not be in and are often delayed when they have to deal with a meter with restricted access. Most recently, it was that there was a very large dog barking at them on the other side of the door, and so they weren't about to open up that door.
We've heard the staff report. Is there any questions or discussion? If not, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight twenty-three for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight twenty-three for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section seven oh five point one two zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding water meter access and penalties and establishing an effective date. Councilman Vins. Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight twenty-three has passed. And last but not least, Bill forty-eight twenty-four. Madam Clerk, would you please read this bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter seven oh five, seven-ten, seven-fifteen, and seven-twenty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus relating to operation of the city's waterwork system and to the operation of the city's sewerage system by the Jefferson County Public District, Public Sewer District, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight twenty-four is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Essentially, this cleans up the portions of our code that refer to the city-owned sewer district, which is no longer the case. It is the Jefferson County Public Sewer District. So it removes the references applying to the city-owned sewerage and instead make sure that we make that transfer to the Jefferson County Public Sewer District. And if I left anything out, Brian?
No, this is just kind of to formalize the new arrangement we have with the sewer district to make clear that they're the ones that set rates for the sewer system now and that they're responsible for maintenance and operation of the system.
We've heard the staff report. Is there any questions or discussion on this bill? Is there any councilman that would like this bill take, carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight twenty-four for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight twenty-four for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter seven oh five, seven-ten, seven-fifteen, and seven-twenty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus relating to operation of the city's waterwork system and to the operation of the city's sewerage system by the Jefferson County Public Sewer District, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight twenty-four has passed. New business?
None, sir.
Old business?
None, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes, sir. Notice we've got some good construction going on at Seven Bruises. Looks like it's really being built up over there. Coming on pretty good. So that ought to be opened up sometime probably in the next couple of months. See the old Sinclair Station? They've got a lot of concrete they poured down there. Pedaling Pie, I understand, is supposed to be going in there. Is that correct? Good. Good. West Main, beautiful asphalt and striping. Looks real good going out through there. We went to American Legion, had a Memorial Day service. We attended yesterday and it brought a lot of things to mind. The, it's not really about for veterans. It's not even for those serving at this time. Of course, we all have family members that's involved in that, but it's about those that died in uniform that we can have the freedoms, like barbecuing and having fun, which a lot of us have done yesterday, but it's not about all of that. So I, I think we just need to hold Memorial Day up a little bit higher and think about those that never made it back. And that's all I have, sir.
Alrighty, sir. Councilman Weiner.
Yeah, Dave, what, pardon me, it's a great point about Memorial Day. You know, so many of our parents and for me, anyway, but brothers and sisters, I'm sure of other, of other people here too, you know, served proudly and gave us the freedoms that we have to be able to do the things we do and to be able to live in this country. So, yeah, thanks for that. On a lighter note, though, what's with all the dead armadillos and raccoons in town? They, we've been walking and they're like, there's one just down here to the left across from Murphy's House. There was one, there's another armadillo up at Collins and West Main that's been decimated. There's one, there's a raccoon that is down on Collins near Crispy Edges down there. And those are, I mean, I don't know what's going on, but there's a lot of, and do we have, is Animal Control in charge of cleaning that up or who does that, Greg?
Well, it was a conversation. I'm going to steal your thunder here. I'm sorry, Councilman Cook. Councilman Cook, actually, I got this up today. Obviously, when it comes to wildlife, Animal Control is not, it's not in their purview. Today, it fell under the purview of the Public Works Department, specifically the Street Department, to remove the armadillo up here on West Main. But Jefferson County has an agreement in place with a company, a firm, that essentially that's what they do is they come and they get dead animals out of the road, specifically wildlife out of the road, but I assume it can also apply to dogs and cats as well. So I think that's something we'll spend some time looking into because I know that's not anything that the guys in Public Works, Street or Water, would look forward to having to do or add it to their job descriptions.
Perfect.
So I will endeavor to look into exactly what the agreement is that Jefferson County has so that we could perhaps emulate that and find a way to scrape up raccoons and armadillos.
I did Animal Control here for the City of Festus.
Sounds like a volunteer.
For about a year and a half.
Congratulations, Dave.
And it was the Animal Control Officer's job at that time.
We'll get you a shirt and a hat and everything.
You wouldn't be able to afford me. But it was, it was Animal Control's job to do that at one time.
The issue we run into now is with wild animals and essentially the training that Animal Control gets while it's very specialized doesn't deal with wildlife. It falls basically with conservation. When we run into live ones, that's who we're supposed to call is the Department of Conservation, and that's what we do. The dead ones, I kind of like the recommendation from Councilman Cook, which was that there's companies that specialize in disposing of those.
You're starting a company, man.
So we will, we will look into it.
Perfect, thank you. No, I mean.
But we did the armadillo today.
The armadillos are bad because I think they carry leprosy, if I'm not mistaken. So that's nothing that I would want my workers to be exposed to or, yeah, anyone in the city here. Yeah, there was a dead cat, just to keep on the dead things going, but there was a dead cat and on Collins the other day. I came over, I saw these two things, and I'm like, what are those? And there were two buzzards that were like this big, overfeeding on the cat, and I guess they eventually were chased away. Yeah. Turkey buzzers. But, yeah. Chief Wendell, I want to thank you for your meeting with me the other day. Really appreciate the conversation and learning, learning more from your point of view what's going on also.
Thanks for coming in and talking to me. I appreciate it.
It was, you know, it's intimidating from my point of view because Chief Wendell, he's like, the door is always open for me, or for me, for us. And I've never have had to visit him before because I don't feel like there's ever been an opportunity that has, from my point of view, for me to be needed to have visited him, visited with you before. So it wasn't intimidating once we got in there. Once I got in there, he was very cordial, very nice, and I thank you for that. So along that line, you mentioned to me that we're going to have an open house, I think, at some point. Do you have a date for that yet?
I have not. I finally was able to wrap that entire package up, a final report, and turned it over to Mr. Camp just about four-thirty. Be nice here. Turn it over to Greg. Yeah, it just didn't sound right saying that. I'm sorry. Turned it over to him about four-thirty this afternoon. Kind of a timeline we're thinking is maybe the week of either the ninth or the sixteenth, trying to set something up. I'm going to be out of town the rest of this week and next week after tomorrow. I've got something going on. So the week after that, we are looking at either the week of the ninth or the sixteenth, trying to put something together. So hopefully, we can have it back in front of you guys, maybe the twenty-third. It's kind of the timeframe I'm looking at right now.
So is that the open house you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the public to have access to that, what type of timeline will there be to give them notice that that?
That we would, we would notice, let them know on Facebook as soon as we set the date for the open house. That's what the open house would be, would be for the public to come in and.
Perfect. So they'd had, I would assume, at least a couple of weeks' notice and maybe something in the leader about it, too?
We can try to hammer down a date for that. I can talk with Greg tomorrow morning. We can maybe try to hammer down a date to when we can host that and be able to get it all done.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Greg. Nice to read my emails at one o'clock in the morning. Appreciate that.
I didn't read it at one.
I know. The brain doesn't shut off. It's a bad problem I have. A couple of things just on Josh and your radar. I know we've talked about it, just bringing it back up because the splash pad's looking really good. Love to talk about park bathrooms at some point and would love to really look at paving the rest of that parking lot and kind of making it a lot more clean over there and.
He lost, been on his three-year plan.
Parking lot and bathroom, we're just waiting for the splash pad open because I don't want to turn it on. The, I don't want to go through the same situation, maybe I'll get the grinder. So they've been totally remodeled on the inside. They're ready to roll. So within the next few weeks, they'll be on, the splash pad opens.
Did I put the second bathroom on top of the asphalt tractor? Can I put that on your radar then? The bathroom up by the soccer fields? That's getting pretty rough. By the playgrounds.
We have nothing up there, so it's going to be grind. There's no gravity sewer out there. That's the problem we have with that bark. There is zero gravity sewer out there. So design work for the Logan Project closure should have been something larger inside for the tracks. We didn't do it. It's something we're going to have to look at. We want to keep upgrading the barn eventually. We didn't do it, there's something we're gonna have to look at. We want to keep upgrading the barn. Eventually we're gonna want restrooms in there. So that's something we'll have to look at too. But I don't know how that'll work now with Jefferson County Public Sewer and that's not owning the system anymore, so.
So is there nothing we can do on the bathroom up there now? I mean, it's pretty rough. You need to poke your head
You're talking about the one on the field?
Where, yeah, with the stage that down a little bit and where the kids play. I mean, it gets used a lot in fairness. I mean, it's heavy traffic, but it's getting pretty rough.
You know, unfortunately, you know, there's water there, it's just not, there's no sewer. So it's working on a vault. It's a, you know, it's not even a septic, it's a vault toilet, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can certainly look either into, there's some very nice vault facilities out there, but at the end of the day, I think more than anything else, I know Josh has told me, it would be wonderful if we could get that, obviously with the, what's coming with the barn and then obviously his shop, to be able to get them on some type of grinder system that would then get everything across the road and hit the, hit the old lagoon's location.
So it sounds like we're almost better off to take a look at a study first and then put
It's not even, we just probably need to have it engineered and just say, this is what we want and, and, and turn them loose. So it is something that, that I know he has had on his radar. We've talked about in the last year or two, probably longer than that. So and it's something that we can certainly make sure we focus on with the upcoming budget. I have, I have it in my notes. Well, actually I have it in an email from one o'clock this morning, so yeah.
Hey Greg, what kind of money you think we're looking at?
I have no idea, Bobby. I have no idea. I have no idea. I, I couldn't begin to guess. I would You gotta get across the
That bathroom, cross to get down to Sunshine, we'd better off putting the road, especially without force. And you have to go harder. I mean, and you could go through the road at some point, but at some point I would also like to talk about remamp of our lakes out there because they're in desperate need. It was raining for about fifteen years now, so.
I agree.
But if we die to get rid of that road, what are we gonna do then? Now we have a force main that runs through there, so that road's
I see down.
And then Last corny one, but it kind of popped in my head too, with the splash pad, which I think we all believe is gonna take off. Any thoughts of maybe going off RFQ and letting somebody open a concession stand up during daytime activity?
About that today. So we, we do have a standing, longstanding agreement with Scott, Charlottesville. But his availability is sometimes, I think, will be pressed a bit when we go to basically a seven-day-a-week operation as opposed to just tournaments. It's an agreement that's been in place. The last time we renewed it was probably five years ago. So Josh and I talked today actually about putting an RFQ out and seeing what kind of interest we get, especially given the fact that he doesn't want to drive a dump truck up to Sam's Club every week and buy concessions and do it ourselves, so.
No, I, I can picture this being the gym and how cool it's gonna be when the barn's done and we got everything done and got concessions and then I did find a company that does sanitize and clean splash pads. I'll just send it to you. Because I just think you're gonna be overwhelmed and I think it's best to let somebody come in when it's closed one day, however you guys want to set it up. But that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Councilman Collier.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Boyer there on Memorial Day. I was watching the news and they were going around asking people what Memorial Day meant to them or what it was about. Most of them didn't have a clue. And that's a shame. That, that we have people in this country that has no clue on what Memorial Day is about and what it's for. And I, it's just, it's just a shame. And on the note of tournaments, I noticed on our schedule that we've got some softball tournaments coming up. There will be getting a lot of interest and use of the field or anything or just practices and
Tournaments, they're scheduled, ninety percent of them usually get canceled.
Oh, really? Yeah. And the barn, I know we're having our grand opening on the eighth. When, what kind of timeline are we gonna have as far as renting it out or having it available for events?
The ninth.
The ninth? Good. That's all I got, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Templeton.
I definitely echo the comments of Councilman Boyer and Collier as far as Memorial Day is something that needs to be recognized and, and celebrated for the freedoms that we have. My only thing really was to see if there, Greg, have you had any update on the quality in? The, the quality is not there. It looks terrible from the backside. It looks terrible from the front side and I happened to be sitting in that parking lot because my mother was waiting for Presley Tours to come pick her up. The curtains tied in knots, the trash visible, the no curtains, the curtains that are ripped down. And that was on the, the backside of the building. I realized that as long as they're meeting code, you know, and they're, they're not in arrears, those types of things, but I didn't know, do we have an opportunity to reach out to Choice Hotels who manages that? Or who, that is their name for their hotel to see, is there, is there anything we can do about that facility?
We have, there, I have nothing to add to our last conversation. The, the last that we had had as part of our conversations with them, when they became compliant, they paid their tourism money that they were in arrears on, they were, they, they, they got cut off on their business license. They did change ownership, which was helpful as part of that process. And then they did meet any of our concerns from code and from the Fire Marshal's perspective, which is also code. Brian was assisted with that. There were other issues pending with the County Health Department and also with the state, if I recall. Brian, can you illuminate?
Yes, they, they needed, they needed a license from the state, which I understand they have now obtained, that they were briefly operating without the required state licensure. But my understanding, the last I knew of this, they were in compliance. But yes, to Councilman Templeton's point, if they're in violation of our property maintenance code, that's something we can potentially cite them for and refer them to municipal court or for more serious violations. Either take abatement actions or a civil lawsuit if it rises to that level.
I, I think that there's certainly concerns from a, what's the nice way of putting it, a hygiene from a, just, it's just not a clean place. Councilwoman Templeton called me the day that
You can see the mounds of clothes and trash and stuff inside the windows. I've, I've been asked if it's closed because it, it literally looks like a hotel that you would see abandoned in an urban area. I mean, it's, it's really in bad shape. I mean, the landscaping, those things is, is one thing, but you know, the other thing too is that if you hotels represent a lot of risks for police and fire as well as we're trying to attract new businesses, new, new people. And I'm sorry, I don't know, you know, if that's something we can address the hotel to say, hey, you know, we probably need to bring the place up instead of, but I don't want our first responders walking into a situation that is made worse because you're already in a confined space. Now you've filled it with trash and clothing and things that are, you're not supposed to live in the hotel. You're supposed to be transient situation. You, you use it, you leave. But because I said, I don't, I don't want to see that we're having issues with you know, safety for, for our first responders to have to go in and deal with anything as well as you want it to be in a place that draws people in, that turns people away. So. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Vins?
Yeah, note on that memorial. Being one of the few veterans here, it is disheartening. You hear it all the time, the unofficial start of summer. And you even see it in the sports when people are singing the National Anthem. Some don't really do what they're supposed to do with National Anthem because they just especially your stars, they don't. But yeah, I wish there was a little bit more recognition and honor. I mean, us ones that are veterans. It's because we didn't fight, but we still served and we were there to do it. So it is disheartening sometimes. I, I understand that. It's, it does hurt. And then, like you said, on the hotel, that's the oldest hotel in the city. And you kind of wish there was a way to go over there to the hotel people because I've had other people talk about that. And it's sad, you wish they could just either upgrade it, tear it down, build it like they do restaurants. When they get to a certain year, they tear them down and rebuild them. And we got a beautiful hotel getting ready to be built, the Hampton, and we're kind of hoping, you know, that they will step up and do something to make their place look nice. And I see where the lights are finally on West Main here. I drove it
And finally started building it for it.
Yeah, I drove that the, the other day and it was nice. I know the lights, when we do those light poles, I guess some of the trees, we can't trim that because that's on their people's property, right? To make, to make the road brighter. Okay. I was, I didn't know if that was something we could do or if we, if that was the residents' response.
Yeah, the sign walk, you can cut it.
Because I see on, I see on North Mill, I'm assuming a lot of those spots are pre, is what the poles are gonna be going in, right where the trees are at. So and, but yeah, that was nice. I I drove that from one end to the other and that was really nice to drive that and how nice it was and it just, man, it was great. I mean, and I want to note it not against that, you know, South Mill and Lee, and especially I'm all for the Central and the Ubert having that four-way stop sign. It's just one of those things, you know, you're used to the Lee Avenue and South Mill. I mean, I hope it works out, but I hope it doesn't mess up traffic or cause more troubles. But I have feeling there's gonna be a lot of people running stop signs because they're not gonna stop. But, but I'm glad to see Central and Ubert get done. That is we took that away and now we're getting it back, but but once again, I, I know that's gonna be, people are gonna run that damn thing. It's, there ain't a stop sign here in this town or anywhere that people don't run. So but other than that, that's it, sir.
Alrighty, Councilman Tannen?
A couple of things. I'm with everybody on Memorial Day. You know, that's I think, I think everything that's been said today is absolutely true as far as forgetting what Memorial Day is about. I mean, I think most people think it's a day's lakes open and camping. No, I don't know. But so I agree with that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the car show that happened weekend before last. It brought a lot of cars and traffic, but the, I think the businesses were overwhelmed. So I think that was a really good thing. A lot of traffic, a lot of good things going on, a lot of business created. So I think, I think I would like to see that keep happening. The other thing, so this is kind of for Josh, but so, so I didn't, I wasn't aware that we didn't have, we have a main, a sewer main, I guess it's a force main going up to a street in the park. I think we really need to look into getting some sewer out there. I mean, that's, there's gonna be, how are we, how are we even gonna keep up with the overflow on the bathrooms with this splash pad and everything else going on?
Well, they're, they're on grinders.
They're what?
They're on a grind. They're on a small residential grinder. So our shop, both of our shops, the bathroom at eleven, so the first pavilion when you cross the bridge, complex bathroom, are all on small residential grinders.
For each building?
This was before we closed Lagoon. We had no issue with it because we were not overcoming fifty horsepower pumps. Again, that's why we're having issues with small residential now. They weren't designed, they were, but at the beginning of their life, they were designed for the head of pressure that they're trying to fight now. Now they're five, six, seven years old, these little five horsepower pumps are gone. Nah, I don't want to do it anymore. So that's the issue we're having. You need a fifty horsepower grinder, either on our side of the tracks or you do a bore and you send those residential grinders to the Lagoon lift station, let them all dump into there and then your problem is
Okay. So, so I, I get that. So you, so basically you had small grinder pumps and then when it, when it went pressurized, your, your horsepower is not big enough to pump it into that pressure
But they're just wearing out.
Yeah.
We had a pretty good idea that this was gonna happen.
So, so basically, like you said, you can either pipe it down to the Lagoon and hit that lift station
Good.
or put another small one in.
So, but I mean, that's now that we don't own sewer, so I guess that would be, it's gonna be a totally new experience with Jefferson County Public Sewer. Who's responsible now?
That's a good point. I, I'd like to see us look into that because we're gonna have to have some sewage in there, like, probably sooner than later. Do what, Mike?
It's four, I'm not put fiber water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Other than that, I, I don't, I think that's all I got, sir.
Alrighty, thank you. I will agree, Jim, with there were four hundred and sixty-three entries into the car show at, at the park two weeks ago. Four hundred and sixty-three entries. That's just people who were showing their cars. And of course, some of these black marks on Main Street. Yes, those are, you're right, they're breaking. But that was a good show and I talked to the owner, what's his name, Barb? Jason, as a matter of fact. I, I talked to Jason and he has just tickled to death with what the city has done to help him put on this show. He basically said, working with the city and Barb and Josh and everybody involved in it has just been a wonderful experience for him and he's gonna keep coming here as long as we will let him. And I think it's a good thing too. I think, I do. And I will agree with everyone's comments on Memorial Day. I'm going to say something that some of you will not agree with. If we had a commander in chief who would be respectful to Memorial Day and to Veterans Day, it might help. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
You cannot interrupt.
I'm sorry, you can go ahead and finish.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those, all those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.